Is your set up to turn off at a certain number of minutes?
I don't know, I just got it.
Mine is, mine's set up to turn off. If I go away, then it'll turn off, and then I just log on again with the password. So you might be set up like I'm set up.
No surprises.
And if it is, if it's too quick, you just need to let Brad know and they can retime it.
Okay.
But I don't mind it, I mean, it's just supposed to, when you walk away from the computer, security-wise, you're supposed to have it turned off.
No surprises here this morning.
You don't want that.
Better not be.
It's a long meeting.
Good morning, it is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the October 3, 2018 city council meeting. Let the record reflect that all the city council members and officials are present. Please stand firstly for an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we ask for your help as we try to share our individual and collective gifts with our community to refurbish our intentions in a regular manner, to give of ourselves in ways that make a value difference to our families, to our neighbors, to our town, and to our nation. Amen.
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 Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Karen, can you just help me announce what the other dates are for the other council meetings? We have a special meeting.
That would be, the next meeting is October the 10th at 9:00 AM.
October the 10th at 9:00 AM, we have the interviews.
The interviews for the Master's Plan.
The Evaluation and Selection Committee, so I wanted everybody to know that. That's at 9:00 AM, October 10th. That will be before the next city council meeting. Thank you, Karen. Okay, first, we have a very special proclamation which Councilmember Profsky will present.
Thank you. It's my honor to do this this morning, and I think as John Barrage says in the invocation, it's about us sharing our gifts, and certainly this person has shared his gifts of time, talent, and treasure with this community for many years, and is very deserving of this. And I'm going to be able, a pleasure to actually present this again to the individual at the event on October 13th at the Aujourd Club where he will be honored. So proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas Lindsey M. Harrington was born and raised in Charlottesville, Virginia, where he earned an undergraduate degree from Virginia Commonwealth University and a master's degree from Pepperdine University. He patriotically served in the United States Air Force and the United States Air Force Reserve for 12 years, where he attained rank of Master Sergeant, and whereas Lindsey made Punta Gorda his home in 1979. He was elected to city council in 1988 and served as a council member until 1996. He was appointed Vice Mayor in 1991 through 1994, and Mayor in 1995. In 1996, while Mayor, the city was recognized by Money Magazine as the best small city in the South. And whereas, in 1996, Lindsey was elected to the state legislature, representing District 72 for eight years. As a legislator, he championed dozens of city, county, community, and regional initiatives, always working for better government while focusing on those issues relevant to his constituents. And whereas, he has had a long and distinguished career in real estate, frequently being recognized for his achievements and service to the people of Charlotte County and the local Association of Realtors. And whereas Lindsey has been active in his community, serving as an officer or a member of the local Association of Realtors, Charlotte County Republican Executive Committee, Punta Gorda Elks Lodge, Number 2606, Charlotte County 4-H Foundation, Royal Order of Ponce de Leon Conquistadors, First United Methodist Church of Punta Gorda, and the De Soto Charlotte Farm Bureau. And whereas Lindsey is being honored by the Charlotte County Republican Executive Committee as the Statesman of the Year, and whereas the people of Punta Gorda wish to show their appreciation for his extensive civic and governmental contributions over the past four decades. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim October 13th, 2018 as Lindsey M. Harrington Day, passed and duly adopted in regular session this third day of October 2018. City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and Lindsey is here to accept.
Remember, I got the hook.
Don's got the hook, make sure I leave. I've always been a person of very few words. Ask Debbie. This has been an honor, and I certainly appreciate it, and I'm honored also to be here with Jane Sturgis, who has been honored by executive committee in the past, just a few years ago. But I want to thank city council for this recognition, thank staff and all, and especially want to thank my friends and the Republican Party here who have been, you know, very supportive over the years and encouraged me to continue on, and I've met a lot of wonderful people over the years who have been able to help in many ways, and I can help them as well. I want to also thank my wife Debbie and my family for the encouragement and support over the years. You know, a lot of times you're off on a Friday and half a day Saturday going to some meeting someplace with Republican Party and the legislature and with city council, so it keeps you real busy, keeps you real busy and keeps you on the run. We're in midterms right now, and it's very important that we all go out and vote. Historically, this is a time here where Floridians and others throughout the nation tend to sit back and not vote like you do when we have a national election. And I just want to remind you that how important elections are, and especially these coming up, that we're going to be electing a new governor, a cabinet, people to local races here in our community. We have someone running right now, matter of fact, our mayor's running. So I just want to remind you to make sure that you've got your vote by mail or are prepared to go early vote, or will vote on Election Day. This is a right that's given to us, determines the future of our community, of our nation, of our state, and we need to pick those personalities and people with the right policies that will guide us the way we wish it to be guided. So again, please make sure you vote. And with that, again, thank you very much for this recognition, and I'll see some of you on the 13th. Thank you.
I will not be there, I'll be chaperoning the Charlotte High Homecoming Dance. My daughter's a senior this year, so I wish you well at your event. I'm sure it's going to be great. Raul's doing a fantastic job. Next is introduction of boarder committee member nominees. Anybody have their name in the running for a boarder committee seat, and they would like to introduce themselves, now would be the time? Is there anybody out there that would like to introduce themselves for a board seat today? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn as the city council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Lindsey. Lindsey. Lindsey.
Debbie.
Lindsey.
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 Lindsey, come on back, come on.
Rachel. Rachel. Karen wants.
Okay.
Okay. Community Redevelopment Agency is called to order, all the members are present. First, we have the CRA's project status report for October 2018. Oh, no, we have citizens' comments, sorry. Marked it off without even doing it. Citizens' comments on CRA agenda items, so now would be the time, they would have caught me, somebody would have caught me. The project status report, the approval of the minutes, or the discussion of the wayfinding, signage, branding, and text changes. Now would be the time to speak on those three items. You have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Maria von Aziken, I'm the manager of the Artisan Atelier. As you all know, the city will change the wayfinding signs in the city, and it was up till now, Artisan Atelier was on it. So they, the discussion is that they take it away, and I think it is absolutely important that the citizen can see where the Artisan Atelier is. So we have the, I think, can you place it some on it? Can you place it? And it is important that it is on it. Yeah. And I would like to say that there are nine artisans in the atelier, and they are all like entities, they have their own business, and it is important for the people who come to visit us to find it, and that's the reason why I'm here. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments on CRA agenda items, now would be the time.
I'm actually over here.
Okay.
Good morning, Kelly Gaylord, resident. I reviewed the wayfinding signs as if I were a visitor coming into town, and I found the signs, the right side of the signs, which is the directional part of the signs, a little confusing. So I took the map that was in the presentation, and I marked the arrows that are on the signs for historic district, which is on a lot of the signs. And, I don't know if you can kind of see this, but to me, it was very confusing to the person driving through town. It kind of sends you in multiple directions, you could actually end up going around in a circle. So I find this confusing, and I wanted to suggest that we seriously look at the historic district words being removed from the right side of the signs, and only leave it on the left side of the sign, which basically says you're in the historic district where appropriate. And I think that that, along with the street sign toppers, I guess is the correct word for it, the historic district street sign toppers that you're looking at as well in the future, that are going to go on top of all the individual streets in the historic districts across both sections of town, I think we'll do an adequate job, a really good job actually, identifying where the historic district is to visitors. I also suggest removing things that are redundant, so like if you have the circle P, which everybody is kind of a universal sign, I feel it's redundant to also say public parking on the very same sign. That, along with removing the historic district from the signs, will actually declutter the signs a little bit, open up some spots for things like the atelier and other things that may come in the future that we want to add to the signs. I also think today, our current practice, if you look at our signs, has two things. We indent second lines, so like if it says Herald Court Center, the center's indented, or Fisherman's Village, it's indented, so people know that it's the same item. I would encourage that we continue that practice, as well as the arrows. Arrows are left, if it's a left arrow, it's left justified, if it's a right arrow, it's right justified. So I would encourage that we continue that practice as well. I hope you would consider these suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CRA agenda items, now would be the time to speak on CRA agenda items. Either podium. Nobody else? Okay, now we will move into the CRA project status report for October 2018.
Howard Cunick, CRA Director. You know, before we get started, we do have a birthday in the room today. Our mayor's birthday is today. Isn't it a big one?
No.
A little birdie just on it.
Forty-nine is big.
Little birdie just on it.
Oh. It's the last one, huh?
Sixty-nine, yeah.
Anyways, we have the CRA monthly report, and this is the Marina activity. Community room still stays fairly active. Liverboards have increased by five, a little city out there. The pump-out vessel, now, the reason you see so much more activity, remember last year we had Hurricane Irma, so it's kind of hard to compare last year to this year. The parking lot at Lashley Park is complete.
Looks really good.
Very great.
It's beautiful.
Yes, it is.
It's so well done.
People using it, came out very nice. Contractor just quietly did the work and quietly left.
You really don't even realize that this was just done. I mean, it looks like it was supposed to be that way.
Yeah, it came out nice.
And well before season, which was key also.
Yeah.
We have a new lease with the Dream Salon. There were two people who were doing it originally, one person, now we terminated the lease with that one person. The other person, who actually was going to operate it, gave us a deposit, they have 30 days to submit for building permits, again, and 90 days to complete their construction, and once they open, assuming no one else leaves, we will be full.
Great.
For the first time ever, we will be full. And the coffee and tea, they're still working. You know, everybody projects we're going to be open on a certain month, and it's, they have more work than, but they'll be open soon. That's the old foot landing spot. The Fresh Market folks pertaining insurance, and so that should be opening soon too. Everything remains on schedule for, we say Harbor Walk Area is 2A and 2B, it's Gilchrist Park Phase 2, really. That's what we're talking about, Gilchrist Park Phase 2. And so hopefully early October, we should have some construction documents. Well, actually, it's early.
It is early October.
Early October.
Well, I did say wait sometime for my changes.
We did. Well, there you go. We got 100% documents yesterday.
Nice.
Area 1 restrooms, bid package, we're going to send it out this week. That's the ones by the pavilions. And the playground, we're going to talk about that.
Can you just explain really quick that when they see, to the public and the viewing public, that when they see the work going on in the park, it's not that we're going in and tearing something out that we've just put in, it's a new construction project? Can you just go over that really briefly?
The Phase 1 for Gilchrist Park, when we did that project, the bids for the restrooms came in way over what we originally thought, so, plus it was in the V-zone. So we went and we said, we're not going to do the restrooms at that time. We got it out of the V-zone, which is a high-velocity zone, it's now in a different zone, and so we redesigned it, and we will be bidding that out. These are to replace the old, old restrooms that we're in that were not ADA accessible, and so we'll be, that construction should be going, well, hopefully when the bids come back, we can start construction first of the year, and have a whole new restroom there as well. These are by the new pavilions. So I know we're going to get questions on that, but we'll keep people up to date. As far as the playground, the restroom, if you've been by the new playground, the restroom continues very well, it's a good contractor there as well. You can see the shape of the building, if you look inside the windows, you can see the stalls are already in, so that's progressing nicely. Later today, we're going to talk about the actual playground surface. Oh, there it is.
As we speak.
There are two sides to this restroom. One side is for the playground, and the other side is for the park users. Library is progressing very nicely.
Yes.
You can actually see the upgraded design, the way it's going to look now.
Questions for Howard?
None.
No? No. Thank you, Howard. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the meeting from September 5.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of September the 5th?
Second. We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have continued discussion of wayfinding, signage, branding, and text changes.
Good morning, for the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. So the wayfinding presentation that we have today, we'll go over the complete presentation again, the text changes that you will see were based on the last CRA meeting where we went over the wayfinding system. This time, we did include a map, which I hopefully will clarify the sign locations a little bit. Lots of numbers on here because there are lots of signs, so we need to try and lay this out a little bit better. The presentation will proceed with the signs along Olympia Avenue, sign 6, skipping numbers through 11. Then we'll turn the corner, go up Nesbit Street to look at sign 20. We'll be looking at those signs that are along Marion Avenue, the one sign that is on Reda Esplanade, the signs that are along US 41 northbound Tamiami Trail, those that are southbound on Cross Street, and then three proposed signs to help clarify some of the directionality for the Lashley Park, and Veterans Park, and the Boat Ramp, Marina, et cetera. So again, moving sign by sign, we're going down Olympia Avenue, sign number 6. We are listing the Herald Court Center, downtown parking, City Hall, Gilchrist Park, and Harbor Walk going north on Harvey Street. This sign is located in the National Register District, so it's west of US 41 southbound, so we have the flag logo says historic district.
Do we want to take them one by one? Yes, go ahead.
Well, we can. Some of these, I really agree with Kelly's suggestion of the indenting the word center so that it looks, I think that was an excellent one. I also, where, and her point of where if an arrow was pointing to the right, it should be right justified, I thought that was really good. And where you, I also want to just make a comment, I think Mitchell, with your expertise and your familiarity, I'm looking for your coaching. And just because I'm a council member, and I think I look at something, I'm just a, you know, a layperson like everybody else, and so if you have expertise that you can share with us, that where it's best practices, and it's from traffic engineering standpoint it makes sense, please let us know that and coach us, because I think that's going to add value to the overall end product, and is, would be consistent with other things that FDOT would install in the city as well. So I just want to make that comment.
Yes.
On that same note, see, I think that, you know, we made our word changes last time. I think, pretty much for me, I'm good with how these are, because we went over these last time and we did word changes. I think that the noting the different directions and everything is because, like a district and everything is on both sides, so I wouldn't want to toy with the signs too much. I think that, like you said, Urban Design did design this according to what they thought, and so I think that, right now, we're probably just going, we're just words now, because we did go over this last time.
I don't agree with that. I think that there, we are looking at some philosophical changes to the signs, and I think that we, I think we do need to go through them.
Oh, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't go through it.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying that we went through them last time, and pretty much our changes last time were just words, but I do think when it comes to like, the taking the historic district things out, I think that's problematic because of the fact that one of the highlights of the city is the fact that we are highlighting our historic image, and to erase that doesn't make any sense. I think that we should keep the signs as Mitchell and them did last time, the same way.
I'm going to disagree with that.
So what are your philosophical changes that you're referring to?
I think that.
Because I, I haven't, we can't talk about this, so if there are philosophical changes there, I don't know.
We can't talk about it?
I mean, we can now, but we haven't until.
Right, right, right. I suggested the last time, and I really felt that having the historic district was confusing. We're pointing people in all different directions. I didn't get any support from that notion, but I still feel, as Kelly pointed out, the arrows point in all different directions. We have a historic district on the left side.
And the right side.
And.
Reunified it.
And we have historic toppers on the street signs. I think as a, we are pointing visitors in different directions.
Because our district is white.
I understand what you're saying, but we are pointing, sending people around in circles. I just think that is not good for us to do.
Well, that's, but if we don't do that, we're being dishonest with them about what the historic district is. The district actually is a wide area, and so if people are traveling through our city, they're going to be in the historic district throughout the whole area. To not acknowledge that we re-unified the historic district a few months ago doesn't make sense to me in our signage.
Gary.
I do find the, I think we should do the center justification. I'm looking at this one sign, I see Herald Court Center and downtown, I see three locations instead of two.
Right. I agree with that.
So I, so I would guess, I guess I'm pointing out, do we, can we have consensus that that's one thing that we should be doing?
The indent?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Then the idea of right justifying or left justifying the arrow, do, can we, that makes sense to me also.
As well.
Yes.
As well.
So I don't, I just, and the reason I'm saying is, I don't want them to get confused in a more spirited discussion that's philosophical. I want to try to, you know, let's be practical first, and then let's get philosophical. So I think that those points were very well taken out, thank you very much. And I do agree with Nancy that, Mitchell, we have a lot of respect for you, so please don't be shy in sharing your expertise. I know you're not, I'm just saying that I just want to make it a public record. You haven't been with me, at least, is all I can say.
So would the arrow pointing straight be in the position it's in now, or do you want it in the middle? Or do you want it?
What is best practice on that?
If I may, best practices for it to be in that, in that position, whereas.
That it is now.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd make an additional point, and this embodies the other comment, one of the other comments of Kelly, and that is, we don't need to have the parking verbiage and the icon at the same time, so I think the icon stands out and is applicable in this, and I think all of the other signage that has both.
I would agree with you. Agreed.
Yes.
First of all, I want to make sure that they're all consistent, so it doesn't confuse people. And another thing that's confusing to people, I have a sign to take them at Reda at 41 North, and it's, and it's, I don't want them to have to go across the bridge and have to come back in order to find the event center. So if we just don't send them up 41 North and then across into Reda, that way they may think that they're going to hotel, I don't know. But that's the only place where I really thought it might get them across the bridge, and we don't know, I want them to do that.
Any other philosophical discussions before we move on?
I would just like to say that I agree with Nancy, and I think having redundant verbiage on each, any of the signs is, it's a waste of our time. I think it is going to be very confusing, I just really do.
And I just add another point. Some of these signs have enough on them that it's confusing to start out with, so anything that we can do to make them a little more eye-pleasing, you know, remember we have people driving through here trying to see where things are, and we don't want to complicate their lives anymore than we have right now.
I think too, with the public parking, we've been so cognizant of, you know, people saying we can't find it, we don't know where to go, where is it, that, you know, that was our thought process, and city staff as well, to put it on as many places as possible. Because really, that was the direction that we sent them in.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
Understand.
Lynn?
Yes, no, I didn't have.
Okay.
I'd also like to say, I think Maria may. I'd also like to, um, say, I think Maria made a, a good point about the atelier. The atelier was a collaborative effort, you know, back in 2010, I believe it was. What? Yeah, 2010. And the CRA actually provided a $15,000 grant to provide signage and to pay for the, the partitions that are in the atelier. So, I think that that was a, CRA was a, a part of the collaboration. So, if there's any, any way that we can find some of the signs where it would be appropriate and not clutter, I would agree, would be, it is a, an enhancement in nine, having nine artists there. That's really great. It's a significant thing, so.
So, are we gonna go, let's, we did one. Number six.
Moving on to sign number seven, again, we have Herald Court Center Downtown. And then this is the first location where we have the text "Public Parking" and the actual blue P symbol. If we eliminate that, then that simplifies that sign. The bottom half could be reserved for future.
Yep.
Yep.
In its entirety.
Do you remember now, the thought process, when we put the words "public parking" on there was, you wanted, at that time, this was a month ago, you wanted the public parking name to stick out.
Yes, we did.
In case people didn't know what that little P was. So, if we take it out, we're gonna take it out.
I'm okay with it being in, only because we've gotten so much of that feedback over the years, that people just don't know where, where to park, that, um, I mean, I, I understand that the P does mean, we understand that the P means "public parking", but on this, then you're just gonna have the blank sign at the bottom. So, in this case, I think this one would make a lot of sense to keep it there. Gary.
It seems to me that we've had some discussion, including recently. We've had difficulty getting people to use the parking. And so, now we've got the employees in the area encouraged to use that parking, so that people will park there. They just didn't know the park there. For whatever reasons, we have a, a, uh, optical problem, difficulty of, of letting people know that it's there, that it's available, and getting them to use as such. Yet, we still have these conversations of preserving parking for downtown. So, I think the redundancy, I understand the arguments about, against the redundancy, but I think maybe the redundancy is kinda necessary for our situation in this particular parking lot. Just because we have difficulty getting people to park there.
Uh-huh.
I mean, businesses along Olympia, I've actually mentioned this. The reason why we had to talk about that P on this side is because people don't know. And I, I do think it doesn't hurt us to direct people as much as possible to parking, because people right now, like Sandra's and people like that, people really don't know where to park. So, I think if we can help guide them towards parking, it's important, because their businesses suffer as a result.
Yes.
However, um, we have previously, as a CRA, chosen to only put the letter P on the side of the building. We did not choose to put, put parking. So, because we all agreed that the P was enough, that people knew what that meant, so, um...
But the problem is, it's not enough. I'm saying there are businesses that are impacted negatively, because people have not been able to recognize that only.
And in this case, on this one-way road, I think it's probably important, because there are, you know, the, the two lanes of traffic there, so that they know that it's coming up in case they need to, need to get over.
There's only one lane of traffic right now.
Yes, we realize that. Get rid of the arrow, get rid of the arrow.
Thank you for adding a little-
Major sinkhole on Olympia Avenue, so that's why the arrow is there. It's not safe. So, what is your pleasure on keeping the public parking on this sign?
I personally think, because of just talking to businesses on Olympia, that we should keep it. It would help them.
May be appropriate on that particular sign, but that's not, again, a universal-
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
I, I agree too.
Yes.
Okay, sign seven. Sign eight.
Sign eight is the sign that actually is identifying the, um, the parking at, um, Hector House Plaza as public parking. And then the sign, the second half of the sign is identifying that if you turn, uh, left, you, you will get to Herald Court Center. So, public parking that way.
Do we need both the Ps on this one?
Right.
Could we, well, what about atelier on this one?
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
Yep. You could certainly add that to this one.
Yes?
You could put atelier on the top and not-
Right.
Eliminate the big P.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we were putting atelier on the top, Artisans, Artisans Atelier.
Right.
With an apostrophe after the S. Then where would we, which, how would we have a directional arrow? Would it go straight ahead, or would it go? Because the artisans-
It, it would, it would go left to-
So, they could park?
These, these are, these signs are, are vehicular.
Okay.
They're not directed towards the pedestrian.
Thank you, that's an excellent point.
So, yes, we would, we would point them that direction, so they could get to the, the parking garage. Park their vehicle and get out and spend their money.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's, that's an excellent point.
Yes. We got it on there. Okay?
Okay. So, sign number nine, this is, um, at Taylor, where we're pointing them to Herald Court Center, Public Parking, uh, the Event Center, and Harbor Walk. And again, that was based on our direction at the last meeting.
So, the suggestion on this one was to indent "center" and remove the words "public parking"?
Correct.
Are we all good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Next sign, we're to Olympia Avenue, just before Tamiami Trail. And we are, have Vietnam Wall, Historic District, Justice Center, Downtown, and Historic District. And this is where we get into the Historic District being sent in multiple directions, because you're in the Historic District, there are multiple ways to, you can go, proceed down Olympia Avenue, and you'll be, uh, continue in the Downtown Commercial Historic District, Bethel St. Marx. If you turn left, then you'll continue to be in the Downtown Commercial, Downtown Commercial Historic District. And you could also be directed to turn left again onto Marion Avenue and, and be in the National Register District. There are two sides to this argument in terms of having the Historic District text. Staff can see it either way, honestly. It is a bit confusing having it. I think the Historic District sign toppers, which are just an idea at this point, we need to bring that back to the, to the board for, for decision and direction on that, final direction and budgeting on those. If those become a reality, this Historic District language does become more redundant, because there will be, uh, we're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to 120, um, street signs that will have these toppers that say Historic District on them throughout the CRA area. And at that point, hopefully, people will recognize that they're in a historic area. Without the need for the, for the text being on the, on the wayfinding signs for the directionality. But it's really the county board's pleasure.
Just out of curiosity, why would we not just put the Historic District banner down the left side and not have Historic District on the actual signs? It, it's all Historic District Downtown.
Correct, it is. In the original wayfinding program, the, the Downtown was specifically called out, because that's the commercial core. So, in a, from a wayfinding perspective, that is sort of a best practice, that you wanna identify that, hey, you're in the place, whatever you wanna name that place. The Fort Myers calls it the River District. We call it Downtown. Those signs that are located, the wayfinding signs that are located west of Cross Street and east of Tamiami Trail will have Historic District on the flags, because, again, you're in Historic Districts, but you're not Downtown. You're not in the core Downtown. So, that's why some of the signs do say Downtown, and some of them do say Historic District, even though they are all technically in Historic Districts.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I think this sign is fine. I say this because, like example, if one wanted to go to the Blanchard House, and there's gonna be other things in terms of other historical markers interpretive signs, you're gonna wanna go in that direction. That's one side. You wanna go this direction. I think that it's an accurate sign that denotes what our city is.
Then if we were going to point towards the Blanchard House, we should say Blanchard House. I just think that-
No, Historic District.
I think that taking, I, I, well, I've already said it.
I mean, it's the district.
I think it is redundant on the bottom. I think the top is important, because we are pointing toward the, the rest of the Historic District. But on the bottom, I think we could use better use of the sign there, maybe put Lashley Park.
I agree with that.
Instead of Historic District again. Yes, go ahead.
That's a good idea.
This may be oversimplified principle, but just seems to me, if we wanna look at this in general, as saying, we have two things, the left side, the, uh, the vertical side is, is a geographic orientation. The right side, perhaps, we should really be looking at that as being site-sensitive.
Yes.
So, we're putting a location on the left. On the right, we're indicating specific points of interest.
I agree with you, Charlie.
Thoughts?
Thoughts on that, yeah?
I mean, I think in this case, the top should stay as it is, but the bottom, I would maybe change the bottom.
Well, I would agree with you, so that, if, if that was the case, then we should not have Historic District on this at all.
Well, I'm saying this sign, I disagree.
If this, if you're pointing at specific site, on sites that you're trying to direct someone to.
Well, you'd have Historic District on the left, and then there would be specific site-
Right, but at this particular site, this sign is in Downtown, and we're pointing to things. So, are you suggesting that the Historic District would be removed up from the top and the bottom? Based on what you were saying?
Yeah, I know, no, I- Point.
I think it's appropriate to keep it on the top.
On the top, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, on the top, yes. It's necessary.
Okay.
But not on the bottom.
The bottom, I mean, do we want it, again, if we're going in your direction, do we wanna say Downtown when we've already said Downtown?
Yeah, we're in Downtown.
Yeah.
It only says Downtown.
Yeah.
Then we can say Lashley Park.
I think Lashley Park should go on the sign.
I agree.
Yes. Again, site-specific.
Everybody okay with that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 11.
Uh, on sign 11, uh, which is at Olympia Avenue, just before Nesbit Street, we have Historic District again, Hospital on top. We actually say the text and have the, the symbol. We added the text because we had the space. We can remove it, um, if, if that's the desire of the board. Then on the bottom section, we have Vietnam Wall, Lashley Park, and Justice Center.
Is anybody bothered by the word "hospital" and the symbol?
Fine.
It's fine.
Okay. That one seems-
Then we would be remove Historic District on the top? Because it has Historic District on the left? You're in it?
Yes, it does. That would be okay?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have Blanchard House on any of these?
No.
Uh, no, we do not. It certainly could be added. It was previously noted that there, that this is the last sign, wayfinding system sign on Olympia Avenue. However, um, since that time, staff has, uh, been made aware of the fact that there is one of the brown, um, uh, state highway signs that does denote that the Blanchard House Museum is, is on the right at MLK. So, we could def- definitely send people through the wayfinding system towards that sign.
So, let's change the top one to Blanchard House.
Yes, I would agree.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
I think just for our population, having the word "hospital" and the symbol is important on this sign. Just in case somebody's in a rush to get there, they see the words and, and the symbol.
Get your attention.
Okay, so the bottom is fine on this? I think so too.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to number 20.
Sign number 20, and this is, uh, on Nesbit Street. So, we have the Vietnam Wall again, Lashley Park, Justice Center. So, we're sending people to the same location. We also tell them that they're going to the Historic District in Downtown. The flag here says Downtown, and that's a misprint. It should say Historic District.
Okay. So, then we would move the Historic District from the bottom? Or do we-
That one is going to the, to the side. Yeah.
Okay.
Left turn is appropriate.
The only other thing with this one, and I don't know how we would do it, is that there is public parking straight ahead as well at Lashley Park.
That is an oversight. We can certainly add the blue P.
Okay.
You know-
We have a great deal more flexibility with this sign, because it's on a local street, not a state highway.
So, are we removing Downtown from the bottom, since we're in Downtown?
We're not in Downtown.
That's a mis-
Yeah, the misprint on the flag, it should say Historic District, not Downtown.
Okay.
This one's misprinted.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if it is in the Historic District, then why, is it confusing to also then point Historic District to the left?
No.
Because Historic District is, is, is large.
Well, I understand that.
And people could continue through the Historic District. I mean, we're, I mean, this, this, again, this is a highlight for our city. We want people to explore the entire Historic District.
I, I just think we should remove it.
Yeah, I think it's redundant, done.
Any other weigh-ins on that?
I, I think we should remove as much redundancy as possible. I think, I think it's somewhat confusing.
I think we need to be consistent.
So, the bottom will just say Downtown? Is that okay?
Yes.
And your left banner's gonna say Historic District?
Yes.
Correct.
That makes sense.
Okay, 23.
Sign number 23, and we are now on East Marion Avenue. We're just before Tamiami Trail, US 41 Northbound. We say Historic District, Herald Court Center on the top. The flag does say Downtown, because they're proceeding immediately into the Downtown. We have Vietnam Wall, Lashley Park, and Event Center hanging the right.
So, this, this is the one I'm concerned about. This is the Event Center, because, especially if you're coming from Marion, and you turn right, and you gotta turn left right away, it's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Okay.
We take him to Taylor.
Okay, so take Event Center off the bottom of that one. Indent the word "center."
Do we wanna put a P for parking on the, on the lower one for Lashley Park?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Question. Do we want to remove Historic District on the top and put on Event Center, so you can point them direct, go straight ahead for the Event Center?
Yes. Yeah, to, to take him to Taylor.
Take them to Taylor?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That would be fine.
Okay. Noted.
And you put down to add the P at the bottom as well?
Yes. Thank you.
I see the typo on "center" at the top. C E N T R E.
Yeah, that's the way it's spelled.
Is it real? Okay. All right.
Yeah.
All these years.
You learn something every day.
I think that's one of those words like leader, you can spell it both ways.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so 20-
A little English.
Sign, sign 23, uh-
Did 23, didn't we?
Sorry. Sign 24, we're at Marion Avenue at Taylor. And here on the top of the sign, we're directing people to Herald Court Center. Again, we have the text "public parking," which could or could not be removed. Then at the bottom, we have Event Center and Harbor Walk.
So, do you wanna, what did you say about the words "public parking"?
There was a great deal of discussion about limiting verbiage and possibly eliminating public parking. And then in certain locations, it would be desirable to have those, those words. And then in certain locations, it would be desirable to have those, those words, so.
I realize it's important, because the garage is there. However, I was, a thought occurred to me, if we remove the words "public parking," we could add Artisans Atelier.
What's your pleasure?
Only thing is, I think it's too important to have people park. They wouldn't be able to build your Artisans Atelier if they can't park anywhere. And I think if they parked, they're gonna see, I, in this case, I think it's too important to direct people to parking.
I think probably the neck, the one on Taylor would be more appropriate, if we want to put atelier.
I'm just trying to figure out some additional way, places where we can put atelier.
I think on this one, the words "public parking" are important.
I agree.
Uh, on the lower part, should we put "public parking" there? Because there's public parking at the Event Center.
Yes.
Just put a P.
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 Yeah, just a P, that's, that's what I meant.
This is West Marion, and so people coming in from 75 or from.
17, yeah.
17 coming in. The idea is to get them to Herald Court Center, where the public parking is. Or else they won't get there.
So I think, I think we leave that. We indent center and leave that.
Yeah. So if we add, if we have a P on the bottom, is that, I have a question for Howard. Is, is what you're saying, my interpretation of what you were saying, is if we add P to the bottom, and then we've got two Ps, it's gonna be confusing. So we need to, if we only put one P, it's really gonna direct people more towards Herald Court Center?
What I was saying, the words "public parking" was important there.
Okay.
That's, and the P, that's fine. I know it's both. But the idea was to get them to the garage.
Okay.
And especially for those coming in for the first time. Yes, there is public parking at the Event Center.
The, the thing that would be confusing to me is if you're going to the Event Center, and you want to park, and it says "The Park Left", and doesn't tell you that you could also, you're totally new to the city, never been here before, first time you've ever been to the Event Center, you may find it, you might find it confusing that there, this is the only way to get parking, and, you know.
Park those places.
So that's why I thought we needed a P on the bottom.
Yeah.
Small P.
Yeah, a little P, yeah.
And then it would.
Not a free P. We've already been through the free.
And wouldn't that be then right-hand justified?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Again, proceeding down Marion Avenue to just before Cross Street, we have at the top, City Hall, Gilchrist Park, and Historic District. On the bottom, we have Herald Court Center and public parking. Directing them back down Cross Street, since they missed the garage.
I mean, I, I don't see the public parking on this sign as crucial as the other one.
I agree.
So that could be, I would be fine with eliminating that.
Yeah.
Those words.
Indent center.
Do we have, do we have Fisherman's Village on any of these?
I would rather see than Fisherman's Village on the, in place of Historic District, if we were gonna add something.
Yeah, but this does, this says Downtown.
This is Downtown.
Yeah, I wouldn't take out Historic District on the sign.
You're right.
There's really no more, there's no more room. Well, there is.
Yeah, Fisherman's Village is not on any of these, is it?
Uh, Fisherman's Village is actually on the next sign.
Okay.
And again.
Yes, good.
Right, right here, we're on the FDOT right-of-way, so we're constrained on, on the, the font size and the number of, so that limits the number of letters.
So the next one, we get to Fisherman's Village. Good. Oh, that's the one right out front.
Yes, right out front.
Yep. So we're removing the words "public parking" on number 25, correct? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
You want to put atelier on the bottom of that? Herald Court Center, Artisans Atelier?
Is it a little too far away on this one?
Yeah. Okay, if there, if there are better places.
I think Taylor would be good. Okay, number 26.
Okay. So number 26, and this is right in front of City Hall, we have the Historic District and Fisherman's Village on the top. And then City Hall, Gilchrist Park, and Harbor Walk, if you turn right.
Isn't that spelled wrong?
Yes, Gilchrist.
Oh, look at that.
So the Historic District on this one.
We don't need it.
Take off.
Don't need it, take it off.
Take off. Fisherman's Village, indent the Village.
I would like for us to find some other place in, on the previous signs on Marion, to find a spot where we can point people towards Fisherman's Village.
I agree.
More, more in advance of this one, just because it's such a, a prominent.
Yes.
Um, a site in our community that, that people go to. In my experience, when I've been there and I've been talking to people, it's, it's probably, vast number of people are from, not local. So if you have a recommendation, I would appreciate it.
We'll certainly look at that. I believe one of the new signs that staff is proposing is on East Marion Avenue. There may be space on that new sign, especially since none of that other space is dedicated for anything else right now. It's newly proposed.
Okay.
Oh, I'm going backwards. We don't, we don't need to do that. So here we are on Red Esplanade. This sign has two faces, because we're, again, we're on a two-way street in this location. So as you're traveling westbound, so towards Gilchrist Park, you will see Gilchrist Park and Harbor Walk. And you will see an immediate left turn for City Hall and the public parking.
Do we need public parking on that one?
No, we don't need public parking on that. Could we put Fisherman's Village on that?
That's right.
Yeah. The direction is Gilchrist Park.
Sure.
Yeah.
First, that takes two lines.
Yes, it does.
So that's gonna mess your sign up.
No, too many words.
You're also pointing people towards the dead end.
True.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yes, needs to be on Marion.
Yes. On the eastbound facing side of the sign, so as you're proceeding towards Cross Street on Reda, you have the sign face, which says, "City Hall and Public Parking."
Again, we could take public parking off of that.
We could take public parking off.
It's actually three places on that sign, so it's very redundant.
Yes.
Yes.
Unnecessary.
Do we need the big P?
What was the justification for both?
What about on the, on the top half, to direct people to the Event Center?
Correct.
Since, it's, it's not a, not a great place to cross, to go to the Event Center, but.
You can.
You can do it. You can get there. And it might be, and, and maybe even, if you're gonna put Event Center, you could also put Lashley Park, because that goes straight through.
Yeah, we do have a rationale for the big P.
Okay.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's because this sign is actually at the location of the parking lot, so we want to.
This one right here.
Right.
Okay.
So we're. Directing people to this parking lot.
That seems to be hidden. Nobody, you know, we have a lot of people that still don't know, this is public parking. And now that Carmelo's is open, we want people to be here, and not on the street or in the park.
It's good thought.
So do we want to add Event Center at the bottom, where it says "public parking"?
Well, then we would have arrows going in different directions.
Oh, true.
Yeah, we would.
Mm-hmm. Leave that one.
All right, I guess we leave it then.
35.
Sign 35. So now we are on Tamiami Trail, US 41 northbound, or just before Olympia Avenue. We're pointing people to Herald Court Center, Historic District.